Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Huffington School Board meeting for Thursday, July 2nd, 2020. We have a full board with us this evening with Andrea Folsom, Norm Gupel, Seth A. Frame, Rob Nato, myself, Jim O'Brien, and then we're joined by Michelle Clark and Steve Chamberlain. So we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Chamberlain, if you have the flag like that right on cue. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we are meeting under emergency conditions as put forward by the governor and his emergency order. And what that emergency order allows for is public bodies like the school board to be able to continue our meetings, but to do so in a completely remote environment for our own safety and for the safety of the community. So we tonight will only be meeting remotely. We have a Zoom. We're doing the meeting over Zoom, and so members of the public can join us in Zoom. They could also call in if they don't have access to a computer for Zoom. And then we're also streaming it, I believe, over YouTube. And so there's multiple ways for the public to engage with the board. And so the governor's emergency order allows for us to meet remotely, but it doesn't waive any of the other requirements of RSA 91A, which is the open meeting guidelines or open meeting statute by the state of New Hampshire. So we will be taking minutes of the meeting, and those will be available per the statute. And there will be two public comment portions of the meeting, one towards the beginning and then one at the end of the meeting. So those on Zoom have the opportunity to engage in public comment. All right, so our next item is any additions or deletions from the agenda by the superintendent, Steve?
The agenda is fine as it stands. I just want to call the attention, there are some catch-up approvals of minutes and action items on advice of council from the May 21st meeting.
Perfect. And how about any correspondence this evening?
There are a few correspondence in the folder in the pack.
Perfect. And I should have mentioned at the onset that part of the meeting remotely is when we do our votes. As a school board, we have to do every vote by roll call, and so I will ask each board member to state their name and then how they're going to vote on each motion that's made. So for those whom this may be your first Zoom meeting with us, it gets a little tedious, and I apologize, but that's how we conduct our business. All right, so we have a number of minutes for us to approve tonight. And so I'd ask if there is a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the minutes of our June 25th non-public session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll start with Andrea.
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes, so those minutes were approved. And then, as Steve mentioned, we have some minutes to reapprove. So I would ask for a motion for the Huffington School Board to reapprove the minutes of the regular board meeting held on April 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these? All right, hearing none. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to reapprove the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on May 5th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these? All right, hearing none. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to reapprove the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on May 7th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these? All right, hearing none. Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And finally, is there a rec- finally, is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to reapprove the minutes of the May 7th non-public session of the Huffington School Board?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these? All right, Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
And Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So those minutes were reapproved, 5-0. Thank you all for bearing with us as we went through those those minutes. So next on the agenda is our first public comment. And before I get to the public comment, I do want to stop for a second and and mention that earlier this week, I think the Huffington community received some correspondence from Superintendent Chamberlain. And I just wanted, I just wanted to make mention of that because this is a big moment for our district, I think, and a big moment for Steve. And so I just have a few things I want to say and then invite any other board members who wish to say anything. You know, I've been on the board now for two years, and I've got to work closely with Steve over the past couple of years and much more closely over the past several months. And I, you know, I'm very proud of Steve, and I'm very proud. I know this is, these are hard decisions that we make, especially when you've gotten so far in your career, and Steve's been with the Huffington School District for over 20 years. So any major decision, you know, that's been made over this time, you know, Steve has been involved in. And just, you know, knowing Steve and working with Steve, it doesn't take long to really understand how much Steve cares. Not only just about, you know, the students in our district, but about the parents in the district, the community itself. You know, Steve puts everything he has and has put everything, no doubt, into this job and into his work and into continuously learning. And it, for me, as both a new board member and now as board chair, you know, Steve's work ethic and the amount of dedication and time and care that he puts into this job is incredibly inspiring. And I just know, like, on those days when I'm having a rough day or I'm having a bad day, and I talk to Steve, you know, his enthusiasm and his spirit and just his continuous search and work to make the district better and to do what's best for kids picks me up and is, it's been a drive. So, you know, over the course of the year and over the winter when Steve was, you know, making his decision on what's best for him and his family and his next step in his career, it was both bittersweet because I knew what we were losing here in Huffington, but I also knew, you know, what we had and what Steve's given to our district. And so I just want to say, you know, as a as a parent, I want to thank Steve for the care that he's given, you know, my four kids who are making their way through the school system. As a taxpayer, I'm grateful because I know the amount of work and effort and time that Steve puts into our budgets and what we're spending money on and the caretaking that he gives. And just as a school board member, I just, I'm amazed by the amount of work and the dedication that Steve gives. And so I'm excited for the year ahead. We, this isn't a goodbye. This is a we still got a lot of work ahead, and I'm excited for that work, and I'm excited to work with you. And I'm very excited to see what the next, what the next move is for you, Steve, as you continue your, your learning and your career. So thank you. And is there any other board member? This is, I didn't mention everybody we're going to do this, but if anybody else has anything they want to say to Steve?
I would love, I would love to. Steve, Steve, Steve. No, I, if you ever talk to me privately, and I'll go out and say publicly is that being on this board is an absolute honor. And I've enjoyed being on this board, but it is an absolute honor to work with Steve Chamberlain. He has made me a better board member. He's made me a better father. And to learn from him and what I need to do in order to be a better board member has really opened my eyes. You know, today, when I was trying to figure out what I was going to say about this, you know, I, it was, it was hard. But for me, I'm happy for Steve, and I think that it's something that, you know, we've discussed about a while now. But one thing that's important for this town to know, that if our kids had a superhero, it would be Steve Chamberlain. You know, he'd rip off his shirt, and it would have the letter C for care.
You don't want that.
No, but I mean that because, and his work is care, and for our students, it's care. And he literally, the amount of hours and time he does for our district, I can tell you, you know, from him calling me at 4:30 in the morning with a snow announcement. I didn't like him at first. It really bothered me, but then I'm on the board, I'm getting emails at 5:30 in the morning from him. He works non-stop. And as a father, you know, Steve started as superintendent when Owen started going to here at Huffington. And I've said to him numerous times, "Thank you for giving my children a great opportunity here at Huffington." And that hopefully, you know, some capacity that continues on, because I believe that the Steve Chamberlain care will continue on here at some capacity. So I thank you, Steve. You know, we have 362 more days to work together and a friendship after that to look forward to. I'm not counting down the days, Steve. I'm just, you know. My point is, thank you. And, you know, we've got a lot to do, and thank you for your care and everything you've done for the district.
I think I'm going to jump right in next. You know, coming onto a board is not easy in the best of times. Coming onto a pandemic board where we get one in-person meeting is even harder. Coming onto a board, and in that one meeting, we found out right away, you know, Steve has been absolutely upfront, transparent with us this entire time. Our board knew from day one what Steve's plans were. I don't think any of us thought that this whole path would take us the way that it did, but here we are. And I would just say that the one thing I really appreciate is, Steve, your optimism. I am a true optimist, but boy, oh, boy, you outshine even me at times. And I really, I know how difficult that is, and I really appreciate it because you have the ability, when others are feeling like, "Oh, man, this is rough," to say, "Nope, we're going to keep going, keep learning." And I think that's a really valuable and important thing. I appreciate it. So thank you, and I look forward to continuing working with you this year.
Absolutely. A big year.
Yeah.
I'll go. So as Andrea just said, in the very first meeting, we closed the schools, and Steve told us he was, this was going to be his last year. That was a lot of information for one meeting. But what I would say is, I've been, you know, I have an 11th grader and an 8th grader, and I've never had a chance to have a meeting with the superintendent. I was just a happy consumer of the product for all of those years. And since March, I've got to understand what this job is. And I did not appreciate what a difficult job it is to be a superintendent in a small district where you are responsible to everyone and everything all of the time with no one running interference for you. And that is impressive. It is a much harder job than I ever understood or anticipated. I wouldn't want it. And I agree with Andrea that the demeanor with which you do it, the smile with which you do it, I mean, that would be the only way you could do it, and you can do it for as many years as you have done it. And it's just very impressive to me. When I saw you give the Above All Care presentation to us, I knew what the, what the mission statement was, but I didn't understand the depth of the thought that has gone into that. And it's not just fluff. That is our school system, and that's a credit to you. So I look forward to this next year. I think Jim's going to announce that I'm going to have an active job in the search for your replacement, and I look forward to your help in finding someone with the same kind of enthusiasm and demeanor that you have to keep Huffington on the track that it's on. Thank you.
Guess that leaves me. So 24 years, Steve. First time we met, I think, was across the hall in the old White Clavert Building at HB. Then a few years after that, the corner office and the vice principals, and then the principal's office and superintendent's office. May have been a few trips to the lake in between there, and, you know, random meetings up at Disney. Who knows? Lots of stuff. But our relationship has definitely evolved a lot over the years in lots of different ways. And I'm, you know, in the short amount of time that I've been on the board, it's another evolution in that relationship. So, and it's been good so far, and I really appreciate the way we've worked together over the last couple of months and look forward to the rest of this year. So thanks for everything over the last 24.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Steve. So with that, out of the way, I'd like to open the floor for public comment. And so if you are, if you are watching this meeting and you wish to provide public comment to the board, this is your first opportunity to do so. So if you just go down to the bottom of your screen, there should be a raise your hand button that you can, you can click on, and that will let me know that you want to have public, that you wish to provide comment. And Steve, if, do you mind pulling people over? That'd be great. So our first public comment is John Madden. So, Mr. Madden, you can unmute your line and provide your comment. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And I, on the heels of those tributes to Steve, well-deserved, I just wanted to say that I was really very upset and disappointed to learn that a superintendent search is an agenda item for the school board meeting, and that Steve Chamberlain is planning to leave Huffington at the end of the upcoming school year. I'm absolutely baffled as to how and why this is happening, frankly. A little bit I know about it from Steve's email to district emailists and staff is that there was a brief discussion of an extension to Steve's contract last December. And I gather that evidently, the outcome of that discussion was not that an extension of Steve's contract was enthusiastically endorsed by that school board. How could that be? One possible explanation that I have heard is that the board inexplicably thought the decision should be deferred to a new board that would be elected in March. That was a dereliction of duty, in my opinion, and had the effect, I imagine, of indicating to Steve that he did not have the support of the school board. And I imagine that for someone like Steve, that is an untenable situation. My question, comment is, how could Steve not have the full confidence and support of the school board? Steve has been superintendent of Huffington Schools for 12 years. Over those 12 years and in his prior eight years in the district as a teacher and principal, Steve has worked tirelessly for our schools, our teachers and staff, and most importantly, for our students, each and every one of them. Our schools have thrived under Steve's leadership. Huffington Schools have risen to the top in rankings of New Hampshire schools under Steve's leadership. I believe he has the respect and support and appreciation of the vast majority of our teachers and staff. Steve is an outstanding leader, educator, administrator, in person. And in a word, as was already said, he cares deeply about our students and our schools. So given that, why is the school board not working hard to retain him as superintendent? Why on earth would be embarking on a superintendent search when we have a superb superintendent now? Beyond that, undertaking a search for a new superintendent now, given everything that is going on, is crazy. I refer to our current budget chaos with the related upheaval to our educational programs, to the COVID crisis and how it will play out in the upcoming months and year, and to the fact that we've just started a building project. This is nuts. If the supposed rationale last December was to lead this up to the new board, what discussions have taken place with the new board, and are you all in agreement with what is happening here with Steve? I really can't imagine that to be the case. Huffington will be extremely hard-pressed to recruit a new superintendent that is anywhere near as good as Steve. Again, this makes no sense. I don't know if irreparable harm has been done to the relationship between Steve and the school board by the way this has been handled. I sincerely hope not. I can certainly understand why Steve might have read the handwriting on the wall, given how he was treated back in December, but that handwriting was wrong. I would certainly urge this board to do everything in your power to reverse this course of events and to correct this major mistake. Steve needs to know that he has the full support and confidence of the Huffington School Board, and it's absolutely deserved. So if there are board members that disagree, then I would say that those members perhaps don't understand their roles and responsibilities as members of the board. And the way this has been handled, it appears to me, has been a huge disservice to our schools and to Steve. Steve deserves better, as do our schools. And if a board member doesn't understand that, I suggest that member or member should reconsider their position rather than Steve leaving our district. The best outcome in all this is that, if at all possible, Steve Chamberlain remains superintendent of the Huffington School District. I sincerely hope it's not too late for that. So, thank you for, for the opportunity.
Well, thank you for your comment, and I think, I think there's a lot that you said that I think is insinuating things. I'm not sure why I can say are not true, and I don't want to put Steve on the spot nor put words in Steve's mouth. But there's many reasons why people who have jobs decide to leave them, and some are for personal reasons and some are for professional reasons. And so I can speak for myself, but I can speak for the past board because I was on it, and I can speak for this current board that I think every member of this board respects, admires, and only wants what's best for Steve and what's best for this district. And so I think it's unfair to the previous board to say that they forced Steve out or for this current board to say that we didn't do what we could do or do our utmost. I mean, these are decisions that are personal in nature when someone decides decides to step away from a job that they know and love and, and to move on to something different, to better themselves. And so I wish Steve the best, and I think our job as a board is to support Steve in the decisions that he makes and to do our best to make sure that he has the support of the board in all of what he does. And so this is a journey that Steve's taking, and this board has been supportive of Steve and will continue to support Steve and continue to support this district in whatever decisions he makes. So thank you for your comments. Thank, thank you for the comments.
And way on the outside looking in, I know.
Well, I appreciate it, but I think you, but I think you made a lot of insinuations about the past board and the relationship that we have with the superintendent that I frankly think are pretty unfair. So thank you for your comments.
Yeah, I may have been wrong. I just, like I said, I think losing Steve is a great loss to the district, but
We agree.
all of you and the hard work you're doing for our district.
Thank you.
Can I just say one thing as well? So I just, you know, as I think Steve, one thing that I brought up was the fact that we've known about this from the beginning. So this board has actually had the opportunity to have numerous private conversations with Steve. So I appreciate that from the outside, this is new news, and it is surprising. And I think for many members of our community, it's upsetting and shocking. And it feels like it came out of nowhere, and it feels like it came at the worst time. And I very much understand those feelings because I experienced them as well in that first board meeting, you know, as a new member, and have had the opportunity to talk with Steve just one-on-one and within our non-public sessions. And, and really, at this point, having it be Steve's choice, had he indicated at all that making a change would be something he was open to, of course, we would have welcomed that conversation. But I just want it to be known that this board, even though we've met a bajillion times over Zoom, we've been able to have these continued conversations as well. But I definitely understand kind of the abrupt feeling and surprise that, that many members and the sadness really and loss that many members of our community are feeling. So I just wanted to reflect that as well.
Thank you, Andrea. So next, Henry Lavoy?
Hi, can you all hear me all right?
We sure can. Welcome. Thanks for joining.
Thank you so much. So as you all know, I wrote you a letter about two weeks ago now. I know you all in varying capacities. A brief introduction about myself. My name's Henry Lavoy. I attended Huffington High School as well as Maple Street, Pearl Martin through pre-K my entire life. I graduated in 2019. And right now, in this moment, I thought that, you know, this is a fantastic opportunity for you as the board and the administration, the school more broadly, to kind of look at what I see as a lot of the failures in terms of broad anti-discrimination policy at HHS. And I think in my letter, I outlined some of my concerns. The reason I wanted to speak today is I wanted to ask a few questions about specifics in regards to language, anti-discrimination language, both in the Huffington High School handbook as well as the school board policy and athletic agreement. So for some background, the Huffington High School anti-discrimination policy is three paragraphs long. And the, the key phrase I see is just that there shall be, quote, "no discrimination" on the basis of age, gender, gender identity, race, creed, color, religion, marital status, sexual orientation, et cetera. And in the handbook, I was kind of concerned when I was going through the harassment and bullying policies and found specifically in the harassment policy that you define protected classes that fall under harassment as disability, marital status, national identity, religion, gender, and sexual orientation. I was curious why race is not on the list of protected classes under harassment or why there's not a broader definition of what discrimination is, either in the handbook or in school board policy? Is that intentional or is that just oversight on the school's part?
Oh, I can actually respond to this, Henry, because I was going to address it earlier. So our anti-discrimination policy is something that we are planning on taking a deep dive into and really looking at. And it's something that I'm pretty passionate about. I've also had conversations with other groups that can help us. That's, you know, it's something that we're still sort of working on behind the scenes, and it takes time, which is frustrating. But I think that a really, I wouldn't want to respond to or make changes reactively. I would really want to make sure that we're not only looking at race, we're looking at gender identification. We're looking at kind of a whole spectrum of calling people in and making sure that these policies are really representative. And so I think that you make really good points, and I think and agree. And, and Steve has talked about this, and Seth is also on the policy committee with me, that these are absolutely things that are on, not just on our radar, but that we're doing research into to address and to improve. Because I think, you know, I think you're right. I think that there's some stuff missing there that we can improve on.
Just to be specific, at the last policy committee meeting, Steve discussed with us the agenda for the year. This is the agenda. I mean, this is a top priority of the agenda. So there, there is going to be action on this front. I haven't. Henry, I am an employment lawyer, so, or in my past, so I have a good understanding of this stuff.
Sure.
And I have, and I will take a deep dive with the rest of the committee into it. And we'll make sure that we have both a good policy, but also think about how to make that policy alive, because that's the key, right? We could write anything. But it's also thinking about how do we make that come to life in our community and in our schools? And, and so the policy committee will also, I think, talk about that as we get the language right, which is only part of the battle.
And just for my background, I'm a social worker with a cultural competency focus. So we're on. I promise.
And I'm curious too. I mean, one of the big agenda items for today is the, the beginning of the superintendent search. Is that something that is anti-discrimination and experience with anti-discrimination reform in high school something you're looking for in candidates? And how does the public, you know, how can we get an idea that that's something that will be the next superintendent's on their radar?
So I'll speak a little bit to it. I thought a little bit because I'm going to share the search. Part of a search process, a couple parts. One part is getting community input about what's important. And there will be probably in early fall a formal way that we reach out to get feedback and ideas of what's important, what we're looking for. And there will then be formalized sort of criteria or things we're looking for. So I hope that this I hope that this will come back, but I mean, I've heard it now, and so it, it will be on my mind. But there will be a formal opportunity for all stakeholders, students, teachers, faculty, community members to tell us what's important in the next superintendent. And so all of that, all of that will be coming, but what you said just now will, will remain in my mind as we go forward with this process.
Great. Thank you, Henry, for your comments. I really appreciate it. And thank you for the letter. It, it was very well written and very thoughtful. So.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just have one more quick question before I go. Is, so you know, you just mentioned getting community input about the superintendent's search. My, my biggest worry with all of this is that there will not be enough student input in this, especially, especially coming from students of color. And, you know, I, I was just wondering, obviously, like you said, this takes time. It's a large process, but like how are you thinking about or planning on, you know, involving student input in this? Because I think that's ultimately the most important kind of data that you can collect to both create policy, but also ensure that those policies are actually doing what they're meant to do.
As part of, are we talking about policy now or a superintendent's search?
I'm talking about just broad anti-discrimination policy, whatever form that ends up taking.
So I guess I'd ask you to let the policy committee have a little bit of time to get their mind around the project. I agree with you that these, these policies, again, don't mean anything if the students and the faculty are not totally embracing it into them. It's just, it's just words on a piece of paper in a book, and that's not that significant. So I think the part of what the policy committee needs to discuss is getting the policies right, but how we get student input into what the policies say, and then hear from the, the students and faculty about what's going on every day in the schools, and how do we action, make it, make it action, make change that's real. And so we, we've just started. This was, we had this meeting last Thursday where Steve set forth what he thought the agenda should be for the year. Andrea and I both agreed that was, that's what we want to do, and we're going to do it. So give us a little time to put our, our collective heads together, but I promise, we understand it's all about the students. That's the whole goal of this. Is to create an environment that is open and tolerant and non-discriminatory for all of our students.
All right. Well, great. Yeah. Well, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The next hand that came up was Candy Garvin. Hi Candy, good evening. Thanks for joining us. Candy, it's unmute yourself. There you go.
I unmuted myself. Thank you for unmuting me, Mr. Chamberlain. I, I want to tell you that I've really enjoyed working with you, Steve. When I was subbing, you made yourself present. You were very helpful. Didn't always agree, but that wasn't right, and that's not what it's all about. We come together with different ideas, and that's how we grow. I'm, I'm excited for you because new adventures are new adventures. You got, you got this not wrapped up. It's not perfect. We cannot poke it with a stick because it's done. But I got to tell you, you're still in the game. You've got it. You know it. And our good wishes go with you. Truly, truly. I don't see that this board, or even the other board, had so much to do with your decision. I'm hoping that it didn't. I'm hoping that you decided that you and your family needed something different, and I am excited for you. So I'm clapping my hands, and we will see you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Candy. Appreciate your comments. So I don't have anybody else indicating that they wish to provide public comment. And we will have another opportunity. So at the tail end of the meeting, there's another opportunity for public comment. So if something comes up, you can provide it then. So we're going to move on in the agenda. And the next item is comments from the school board. And so I don't have an order in mind, so anybody who wishes to sort of start with, with any additional comments, please do.
I can go real quick. So actually, my conversation, our conversation that we just had with Henry was one thing that I really wanted to address today. So I think that's, I checked that off of my list. The one other thing, and I, I think we're going to have other board members speak to this. You know, there's a lot of comments and questions and concerns that sort of fly all around, either from person to person or on the internet, and I have appreciated all of the emails that we've been receiving. Those are really helpful in helping to explain sort of what we're thinking, the stuff that we're walking through. And I know that folks are looking for some quick changes. And I guess kind of similarly to my response to Henry is that we're working on it. Change, however, is slow. The only time that our board is able to talk together like this is, are in these meetings. So these are really the times that we can make big decisions. Otherwise, if more than two of us are talking together, it's a quorum, we have to announce it. So we don't get to talk all together like this. And because of that, especially since we're having to do things over Zoom, I feel like things are taking a little longer than the public would like in some cases. I know that as somebody who likes things to happen quickly, it can be frustrating for me as well. But I just do want to echo the fact that a lot of the things that we're seeing as far as everything from what our budget looks like going forward to our anti-discrimination policies, to our communication within the community are all top of mind. And I, I think as the days go on, we will start seeing more and more of that kind of coming out. But I did just want to say that publicly as well.
Andrea.
I'll add, I'll add a little bit to that. You know, I want to say a huge thank you. Huge, huge thank you to all the community members that reached out to me last weekend. I had a lot of talks about our budget, about the facility project, and just a lot of questions just about, you know, what we're planning on potentially doing. And they approached me saying, Norm, what is this plan that you guys plan doing with CIP potentially with the budget? And, you know, it's a group of us, we have to decide, not one board member. And I made that very clear to them, but I did share my visions with them. But to what Andrea had said, it's important that if you have a question, a comment, recommendation, contact this school board or Steve Chamberlain. Don't read and believe everything that's on Facebook. Focus on positive energy, and if you have a question to ask us, it's our job to reply to you. If we don't know the answer, we're going to find out for you what we can and give you a reply. That's why we're elected. And I wanted to just really point out to this community and tell them, thank you so much for taking time to reach out to us. Because for me, I've enjoyed the chats with a lot of people in the community. They've shared some ideas with me that they'd like to see, which I'm going to bring to this board. And I think together, we may not see eye to eye at times, but the most important thing we can do is have respect for each other. And that is the most important thing that we need to do, is that we are neighbors. We are in the same, you know, town, and that at the end of the day, you know, we all have a goal, and we all have a vision. We not, may not agree, but let's all be civil and respectful. So one thing that's important moving forward for this board, for me, I mentioned to Jim and many of you, is communication. That we need to be able to communicate with this community and share our vision and share a plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Norm.
I'll build on that just a little bit. So first, I would like to say, just because of Candy's comments and Mr. Baden's comments, I do want this to be entirely clear. I showed up to the first meeting in March, and Steve told us this was his decision. And I specifically asked Steve, are you sure? I have no interest in you leaving. And he said, I have thought long and hard about this, and this is the decision I have made. So I just want that to be clear, because I don't want to continue to hear this suggestion that it's something other than it was. And that's exactly how it was. It's upsetting. And, you know, it's not how I wanted it to go, but that, that is how it actually did happen. I just want that to be clear. Secondly, I do want to talk about the opportunity, though, that a superintendent's search presents. We're going to talk about it more in a minute, but you know, we've been debating a lot about the budget for the next year. And that's a micro problem, right? That's going to last one year. The superintendent's search is a macro problem. It is an opportunity for us as a community, as a school system, as students, as parents, as teachers, as, as members of our town to talk about what we see the long-term future is. And that's a more interesting conversation than how much are we going to spend next year on the elevator? And so what I'm hoping is that you all take that opportunity with as much vigor as you've taken the budget discussion, because I think the benefits from that will be terrific, because we need to think strategically, long-term, about where we want to drive this school system. And this is how, this is a great opportunity we're going to have over the next several months to have that conversation. And I hope you all stay as actively engaged with that as you have been over the past several months. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Seth.
Jim, I'm going to pause because I think I'm going to be doing a fair amount of talking in a few minutes.
You're ceding your time. Thanks for having me. I'll, I'll be, I'll be relatively short and probably on a completely different topic than my other three colleagues have gone on. So yesterday I had what I, I felt was a pretty unique opportunity and one I was actually quite proud to be part of. So I, I was able to represent the town of Hopkinton at a press conference, or at least a Zoom press conference anyway, that was organized by the attorneys who, who are part of the convale lawsuit against the state of New Hampshire. This is around the state adequacy aid that communities receive, including Hopkinton. And as we mentioned, I think at our last meeting, and many meetings before that, the, our town has joined on the amicus brief to the convale lawsuit. And so at the press conference, I was joined by other superintendents or school board chairs from the city of Manchester, from the city of Nashua, from Pittsfield, and from the Winesquon district. And each of us spoke about the both, well, really the challenges of the state not meeting what we feel, at least what I feel, is their commitment to providing adequate education. If anybody looks at our revenue and looks at the budget, can attest, you know, the, the state doesn't provide an adequate education. I think we, Steve did an analysis. If, if we just took the state aid that we received for, for education and adequacy, and that's how we funded our district, we would pretty much not be able to keep the doors open, the lights on, and not provide any of the core programs. So what the state provide us, provides us in terms of adequacy aid is one, not adequate to meet the needs of our students at all. And two, it's not adequate to meet the needs of our taxpayers at all. And so so the, the conversation was interesting. I thought it was really good. But I do want to read something that was in one of the articles in the Concord Monitor. To me, it sort of strikes the heart of the problem, and it's really at the heart of the debate that we're having here. As Seth said, on this micro issue of the budget. So all, I'm going to read this. I apologize for sort of reading something off a different screen, but bear with me. So all of the school districts argue the entire school funding system unconstitutional because it results in harsh disparities in local tax rates. Property poor towns are forced to raise taxes because, because state adequacy aid is so underfunded. But property rich towns can keep their rates low and fully support their schools. For example, the districts point out that Derry, Hopkinton, and Berlin pay a higher tax rate than Portsmouth and Marlton Borough, even though they spend less per pupil. And that, that is, that is striking, that we spend in our district, an average cost per pupil, we spend less per pupil than the, than towns of Portsmouth, Marlton Borough, and a whole host of others. Yet, because we are a property poor district, our tax rates are much higher to cover those costs. And, and what we see is a squeeze on budgets. We start seeing a squeeze on the educational programs that we're able to offer our students, even though our spending is, is in line with state average. And so this is a real problem. I know this has come up in many conversations. I'm proud that the board has, has chosen to join the, the, as an amicus brief on the lawsuit. I hope that the convale school district is, wins this, and that the state finally comes to grips with the, the property tax situation and what it does to our communities to be in a constant struggle with educating our children and being able to afford to live in their communities. And I, I also want to just highlight the work that our state representatives are doing, specifically Dave Luna, who is chairing a commission looking at this very issue on education funding. And I know they've been meeting for the better, better course of a year. They're due to make recommendations at the end of this year. And I hope that at some point in the near future, we can invite Representative Luna and others to have a conversation with this board, and I think with the community on the real impacts that these funding, this funding situation causes. Because it's real here in Hopkinton. I think we're feeling this now. And I, and I think the state needs to really understand that the continuing business as usual, where we're, we're in this, these battles all the time, especially in property poor communities is a real struggle. And so there's going to be articles coming out about this in the next couple of days. I, I encourage everybody to read them and to reflect upon them. And to really, you know, help us figure out a sustainable solution to this really challenging issue. All right. With that, thanks for everybody for bearing with us there. We are going to go to the next portion of our meeting. There are no presentations and staff reports this evening. And so we have a number of items for board discussion. And so the first one that we are going to set up to have a conversation about, I'm going to turn it over to Rob in a second, is to I think the agenda item says FY21, revisiting the May 30 budget. And I know Rob has been thinking a lot about, about our situation and, you know, our conversation of last week, that tonight we wanted to to start moving towards a recommended number for the August 15 meeting. And so I know Rob's been, been working on that. So I'm going to turn it over to, to Rob. I think to walk us through what he's thinking and, and a proposal that he's put together.
Thanks, Jim.
Rob, where do you want to start?
Let's put the, let's put this, well, don't put the spreadsheet up yet. Okay, I'll, I'll have you put it up in a second. So I've thought a lot about where we're at. I've thought a lot about the words reasonable and what that means to different people. And I think what I'm going to put before the board tonight, some people aren't going to think it's reasonable because it's, it's still an increase, and some people are going to not think it's reasonable because it's more of an increase or more of a cut. But I think that by the end of the presentation, I hope people come to appreciate how I got there. And really, what I balanced was I, I didn't start with numbers. I started with things. And essentially, my logic stream was, let's take a look at the, using austerity in administrative elements and ancillary elements, things that support our programs. But let's protect our student services. Let's protect our classes. Let's protect our elective. Let's protect extracurricular activities, sports, all of those things that are the core of an education in the Hopkinton School District. And I think what I'm going to bring forward here in this spreadsheet in a minute does that. And, you know, I spent a lot of the week chatting with Steve and working through this. And so let, let's get the spreadsheet up and we'll, we'll walk through it. So Steve, if you could put that up for me, that'd be great.
You see that okay?
Nope.
Well, how about now?
Yes. Okay. So I'm going to work through each section. In the blue is a series of reductions. In the light tan are the various Article Three as proposed through the course of time in the last four months. And then some impacts on the tax rate and what it looks like. So I want to go through the proposed reductions one by one and talk a little bit about that austerity and how it either fits the model of being an administrative or ancillary, or perhaps something just based on our new current knowledge that we don't need to fund for next year. So we've already talked about no raises for salaried staff. So that's administrative austerity. Elimination of additional days for individuals, that would be some time for administrative assistant and for our guidance counselor assistant, Mrs. Fisher at the, at the high school. The health insurance reduction, we've already talked about. The Hess position at the high school is a position that we feel we can move forward with without at this point in time. Staffing change is, is a movement for a staff person that is not necessarily going into next year. The next piece is the technology property. The next piece is technology, property, and equipment. So if you remember back to our long laundry list, we had a series of Chromebooks and materials for Maple Street, Harold Martin. But when we use some of the undesigned fund balance for those things, they were paid for this year. So with that assumption in mind, then there's some money that had been set aside for next year that we could take back. So that's that technology piece coming out of that, that line. So again, some administrative or ancillary austerity. Supplies and general fund, we've talked about that. We've asked people to trim the sales as best they could, and that was a number that was come up with. Projections for savings in heating, fuel, and propane. The next one looks like it is a cut in program, but to be clear, because there is not going, and Steve can confirm this for me if he needs to, but because we don't have another section of third grade at Harold Martin School, it's not necessary to have the PE and the art to cover those sections. Restructuring Technology Department is something that Matt Stone is working on in terms of how they are delivering services across schools. So again, more administrative austerity. The Maple Street School Special Education Teacher, which is fairly narrow in scope. And I think the principals have talked about that. Steve has talked about that. And again, they feel that they can move forward and still provide services. The Maple Street School Art, because of the reduction in sixth grade, again, not necessarily to have that one piece. So it's not a reduction of core program. It is a reduction due to having one less grade in sixth grade. The non-obligated curriculum development piece, that was initially a $31,000 hit. But monies are needed there to make things move forward. So there's some math curriculum work that needs to have happen and some other things. So taking 16,000 from that and leaving 15,000 for that work to get done. So more austerity in the world of administrative or ancillary side. The savings from summer school, didn't violate my own rule there, ESQ. And then the phased bond savings that we talked about in, you know, that the board put together about a month ago. So the grand total of all of those things comes up with 523,509. Now, we did need to put back in there because this is all working off of the original warrant from March 2020, which had cut the library media assistance. And I think you all remember me speaking about that not being particularly a good idea to shut down our libraries for large portions of the day. So that had been cut from that budget. So this goes back in here. So our total reduction is 492,476. And again, I feel really strongly that these are administrative austerity programs. This is ancillary austerity programs, not student services. So this isn't on the screen, but I just want to go through the big scary list from June 18. What moves forward, what doesn't get cut, what we keep. Two sections of English. The wood technology program en masse, the numeracy specialists, the section of art at the middle high school, a section of music at the middle high school, a semester, or excuse me, a year course in science at the middle high school, independent studies at the middle high school, field trips across the district, middle school sports, high school sports, the SAP position at the middle high school, and the district wide school psychologists, monies for demonstrated success in Dreambox at the lower elementary schools, and the library media assistance. Those all stay. Those are core to what we do. And I'm hoping that the board and the people in town, as they go to vote, understand there is a grave difference between trimming where we can trim and sacrificing programs. And I think this does a nice job of meeting that. Moving to the right side, just to walk through it. The original warrant from March gave us a 4.3% increase. Our amended warrant that the school board put forward in May gave us a 2.5, 3% increase. This proposal brings us to a 1.8% increase. So if I were to go back in time to school district meeting and say, well, we've got an operating budget with a 1.8% increase, I think most people would say that is absolutely positively more than reasonable and would be very happy with that as an outcome. The next parts, just talk about the tax impact. So 48 cents would be the actual impact of that $370,810. And it's an increase. Okay, so just want to be clear here. Yes, I understand this is still an increase and there are folks who don't want to see an increase. But I'm also saying, please be reasonable about when we're making cuts and the impact of those cuts, not only on the schools, but how that will ripple through our entire town as time goes by. The application of the undesigned fund balance brings 51 cents back. So the impact of Article III by itself is minus 3 cents. The previously passed articles, you can see there, 2 cents, 18 cents, 5 cents, and 2 cents. Those were all passed at the initial drive-through voting. So the overall tax impact would be 24 cents. However, and I'm gonna probably turn it over to Michelle here in just a little bit, but that does not account for revenue. So while those are numbers that apply if we were just looking at them in isolation, when we account for revenue, the actual change in the tax rate is 7 cents. So we're gonna see a 7 cent increase in the school portion of the tax rate if we were to move forward with this proposal. And what that would look like for folks who like to see how it impacts them, you know, if you have a $200,000 house, we're talking $14 for the year. 21 on a 328, on a 400, 500, on a $500 property, $35. In my mind, that is more than reasonable. We have done our due diligence to meet the expectations of folks who want us to bring this budget down. And at the same time, we've done our due diligence to maintain our core programs across all schools to do the best we possibly can for our students in some difficult times. So I'm gonna pause there and see if anybody has questions.
Rob, thank you so much for putting this together. I guess my question was what you hint, you hinted that Michelle might be best to answer, which is what's in that yellow bar? Just curious.
Yes. Because it seems mystifying that you have a, what looks like a 24 cent impact, but it's really only 7 cents. So I'm not an accountant.
I'll start digging in and Michelle will pick up. And I've got the revenue sheet. So remember, the tax rate is impacted by a change from last year to this year. So for example, the repair and maintenance fund, if that was voted down, that would save the town 18 cents on their tax rate. But because it was supported, the only impact on the tax rate is the change from last year's maintenance trust to this year's, because that's the delta that impacts the rate. So it's, that's what's, it's kind of funky that if you say no to it, the entire 18 cents is saved. But if you say yes to it, the impact on the tax rate is the delta between last year's and this year's. So if you remember last year, we had like a contingency fund, right? And that didn't pass this year. And we had, like the district vehicle fund was about the same. So though it would have been a 2 cent savings, it's even on the tax rate. So I'm gonna just show you the revenue sheet. Can you see the, can you see that? And I can probably blow it up?
Yeah.
So this was last year's tax rate, $20.40. After all the revenues, and these are the revenues, the changes, this is the big one. This is the fun one to look at. That's right, we're not getting a bond, right? Remember? This year, we didn't vote for a bond. So this is the sheet that we, and this will be in support documents tomorrow morning, so people can look at this. But this is, this is the culmination of the expense side and all the revenue, entire warrant. And $20.40, it's 20, it's a 7 cent increase and it'd be $20. Your tax rate would be, what Michelle and I like to say, it would be no higher than $20.40, 7 cents. It could be lower, because even as we go, for example, and we'll talk about this at the finance committee, we just received some more Medicaid revenue that we didn't know, right? Remember, we spent all that time talking about that. So in the 390, the 390 number, which is gone, it's a little, it's up to like 391 now, just because we added just a hair more. If that goes up, that 7 cents will continue to drop with more revenue. So the tax rate is the delta. The tax impact is if you voted down, you would have saved that entire 18 cents. So that's the difference between the, what Rob talked about, if you went article by article, I'm pointing at the screen, but you can't really see that. Article by article, it's 20, if you, if they said no to everything, that 24 cents would have been saved. But by saying yes, it's only the delta that gets recorded on the tax rate, because the tax rate goes from the previous one. So it's, as Rob said, and Michelle calculated, there's that 0.07 that goes up to this 0.07, which factors in. So because remember, if everything was identical, year to year, same expense, same revenue, the tax rate wouldn't change. Right? It doesn't go to zero, right? It just doesn't change. So when, this actually factors in the delta of some things that went up and some things that went down. Michelle, how'd I do?
You did great. You did great.
I have a great coach. Remember, I go to Michelle Clark College every day. So that's where we are. And Michelle and I, we've been doing this a while. That, I feel very confident that is not going to be any higher than $20.47. And it could be lower. So if we have, for example, another 100,000 savings, it'd be 13 cents. It could drop below. You with me? Again, I can have trouble reading on the Texas Hold'em on the Zoom, but I hope, Jim, I hope that helps.
Oh, that helped me a lot. Andrea.
It did. Yeah. Steve, can you really like zoom, like physically zoom in so we can really see? Because I think there's so many numbers, and I know that sometimes all of those numbers can get really overwhelming.
On which one? The, Rob, the first one or the second one?
Down on, on the revenue sheet, if you could zoom in on the bottom at the estimated tax rate 2019 and estimated tax rate 2020. So we can really see where you're getting that 7 cents. Because I know that there are a lot of other numbers on here, but I think that...
How's that? Is that better?
You should go over and look. That is beautiful. Thank you.
So this is the tag, it was $20.40. After, this is the town valuation, all the changes in 2047. And that, the variance, it went up 0.07 cents, 7 pennies.
Thank you.
This is one of my favorite forms that Michelle does.
Can I jump in here for a second, Jim?
Yeah, please do.
Okay. So I said the same song and dance from the day when this board got together and they had said, give this, give this board a chance to really work with budget. And I just want to say, Rob, that was a very, very, very clear presentation of explaining your thought process and the tax rate and everything. And I just want to say thank you very much. Very clear and to the point. I've said, you know, multiple times, like, you know, give us, give us a time, give us an opportunity to do this. Now we hear you guys want to have a different budget format, which we'll look into. And that's something the finance committee will look at. But Rob, I just want to say thank you for a clear explanation on this and your mindset and why you decided to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
So just, just to go back to May 30, it was about a 343. And now it, as alluded to, it's a 429.
And I know you and Rob have spoken, I haven't, we haven't, I haven't talked to you about it. So I guess just an opportunity, as you look at that, the reduction list, and this is sort of an unfair question, because I think throughout this whole process, I mean, all these reductions that we're talking about have, they all have impact. And so I think Rob took, I think the right approach, which is, which is to not, to not be looking at the, you know, the education of the student side and be looking more at the austerity on the administrative side. And I guess my question is, you know, all things being equal, as you look through this list, like how, how do you feel about this in terms of, you know, managing the district?
No, I appreciate, and Rob and I met and we've talked. I think it does secure the most essential core components of our education. You know, one of the things that Rob and I, like on the, on non-obligated curriculum development, I mean, that at one point was completely out, but to put some back in, just because we do have some approved courses that we have to support. And it's difficult to expect teachers, right, to not. So I appreciate that. I think the, you know, one of the things that we're hoping, I'll be honest with you, but it goes this whole thing. We're hoping that we don't get significant student enrollment increases. I did send an email out to all the office managers and the registrar at the secondary, we're trying to get an update, where are we? Looks like we're pretty flat at the high school in and out. Looks like it's, and I didn't, I haven't heard yet from Harold or Maple, but I'll keep you updated on student enrollment. You know, where we are, of course, we're watching third grade closely, sixth grade closely. But based on the last enrollment that I had, Rob is right on that this, this supports the program that we need. And I think, no, I really do, I appreciate Rob's reflection on it and his philosophical approach. And I think we got it about as a place where you can go.
And I just wanted to verify again too, that any of the positions that we see on here, like the the HESS position or the Maple Street School Special Ed position, those are current, currently unfilled positions, correct? So those are not people.
And it's correct. Those, right. We've issued contracts. In that, you know, there's always risk. But we think, right, we think we can, based on case management size at the secondary level, support without that instructional system. And based on where we are and our students, as Rob looked, we think that we can work with what we have as an MSS staff. And I think, based on where we are, I think we have to assume some of that risk right now because of where we are financially in the community. So no, I think this is a very solid, and to get down, total down to 7 cents on the tax rate, total, once you're all in, is a pretty strong approach. And I'm gonna say it again, I think we're gonna have, we're gonna have more revenue. And I know people are focused, yes, it's an increase, but with more revenue, because of all the work we've done trying to make sure we qualify for Medicaid, to the Medicaid Schools Program. And, you know, what we've done, I think you won't see it more than 2047.
Can I speak to the, it's still an increased part?
Please.
The part of my thinking when I was going through the list of things that we were keeping, the sections of English, the sections of science, the art, the wood tech, et cetera. How many students are being serviced by that? So if you sort of calculate what, what I would know to be the typical class size, you're looking at somewhere between 250 to 300 individual students who wouldn't have opportunities to take classes and either be forced into situations where it would increase the class size somewhere else, perhaps beyond what's manageable or into a study hall. And that's not what we want to do. You know, students also have requirements. It may be an elective, but they have certain electives that they have to take in order to meet their graduation requirements. So these are again, core parts of our classes and the overall things that kids do. If we were to go deeper, if folks who say it's still an increase and they're, we're gonna vote this down regardless because it's an increase, think about what we're doing. We would then be putting Hopkinton School District on a path where we would not be providing the type of education that is going to keep us in a position where people are going to want to continue to come. And I don't say that flippantly, like people, you know, but we're gonna become less attractive. And if this process and this mindset continues year after year, then yeah, you're going to be in a scenario where, you know, if people aren't buying new homes because somebody moved out because their kid's graduated and then they're moving in with kids, then values of homes fall. And this, this is a cycle that we can walk through, and we become even more property poor. It is really in our best interest to make sure that we protect our schools and protect our students. And I get the austerity part, and I hope people can see that this is an effort to do that and to appreciate their difficulties with their tax situation. But they can also appreciate that we need to provide a first But they can also appreciate that we need to provide a first-class education to maintain what Hopkinton has common and what is representative in home values across town. Hope that wasn't too word.
No, that was right on, Rob. Seth, did you want to jump in there? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I hope this gets virtually unanimous support of the town. When people say no increased budget, I don't, I hope they don't really mean that for what those words literally mean. Because as we spoke about a couple of weeks ago, the fixed cost of the Hopkinton schools are going to rise each and every year. If you really mean a no increased budget, that means every year we are going to slash and slash and slash because those fixed costs are going to go up, we don't control them. That will just happen and you will slash every year. We are slashing here. We are cutting, we are cutting down to the point where your school board thinks this is the best we can do to protect the education while cutting as far as we can go. And that's, you know, I've read all the emails, all the letters from all sides. And I assume no one loves any of this, right? Some people want it to be zero, some people think you should have more. Well, we, this is the middle ground and our community will get through this. On the other side of this, it will be a victory if now we can all come together and say, okay, the school board has gone right up to the cusp of cutting the core of education, but was able to stop short of that and created what we see here, small increases. There are always going to be increases if you are going to manage a school system because of those fixed costs. I hope everyone understands that, everyone can get behind this. We can move forward together as one community, supporting everyone and making sure we support the Hopkinton schools. So excellent job, Rob. I hope, I support this and I hope everyone else does as well.
Yeah, and I would, I would echo everything what everyone said on, on this. But for this board, for us to be out there communicating this, communicated how important that this gets voted and agreed upon from the town. Because for me, you know, Rob is right. People do move here to Hopkinton for our schools and, and it's true. If you're watching the House of, House of Mark right now, houses are gone like that. And people are moving here, you ask them, it's for our schools. If we lose the educational value of our schools, he's right. People are going to leave, people, and our house values are going to drop. And our house, and listen, the kids' education is an investment, so isn't some people who don't have kids, their house is also. As a board member, I get really, I get really, I don't want to say offended or sad. Probably more sad when I hear that parents want to send their kids to another school outside of Hopkinton because we're not meeting the needs. I, it, it makes me sad because it shouldn't be that way. It shouldn't be a battle based on us struggling with, with our taxes. And the kids are losing the benefits of a good, solid education. I just, I really hope that, you know, when we agree and if we agree on this, that this board is out there advocating, that we are out, out there having a plan, talking to the community, sharing the facts, writing letters to the editor, being at the dump, talking to people, sharing our thoughts, being at the gazebo with PPE and really communicating the urgency of approving this and getting this, getting this passed. It is important that we are safe, absolutely. And my heart goes out to everyone that's been affected with COVID-19. But we have to get this budget passed and it's so important to our students and it's important to everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Norm. I mean, I don't want to belabor because I, I agree, I think I agree wholeheartedly with, you know, Rob's really well thought out and really well stated argument for this, you know, this, so we've been cutting and I think I spoke to Steve, I don't remember if it was the last week, but you know, it feels like, you know, since October of last year, you know, Steve and the school board, and school boards, you know, have been cutting, I've been cutting the budgets and some of it's because new information that we've received. But, you know, we've been, we've been cutting and I think the, I think the exercise we went through to get to the flat budget, it was an exercise that I know opened, it opened my eyes, and I know it opened a lot of other people's eyes in the communities to, you know, just how dramatic a change in the school district that flat budget would represent. And, and so I think this work that Rob's put together, you know, really balances in some ways. It, it sort of refocuses, at least in my mind, refocuses me and refocuses the district on protecting what is important and needed to have our system run. A 1.8, I think Rob is, is more than accurate, a 1.8% increase year over year. I think in any year is, 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 would be welcome news at any, at any town meeting we would attend. But this is, does more than that. I mean, we're returning fund balance. You know, this would be a reduction in the operating budget in terms of a tax rate reduction. And then having, you know, the overall effect of the warrant for the school portion of, of having a seven cents or on a $300,000 property, a $21 annual increase. Without sacrificing, I think those programs that everybody's spoken about, that are so important to the education of our kids. I think this is, I think this is our best path forward. I can't think of, I mean, I guess I could think of a lot of better paths forward. But I think this is the reasonable and realistic and prudent path forward that is balancing, I think, the interests of all the community that we've been hearing from, from those who don't want to sacrifice the educational quality and those who are looking for, you know, some, a little bit of a, of a tax break or a tax reduction in order to manage in the economic situation we find ourselves in. And I think this does that. And so I, I too support this. I agree with Norm. I think our job, if as a board, we want to proceed with these numbers and ask the moderator, as he puts together the August 15th, you know, meeting to, to use this, to use this number and to allow the board to speak to it. Feels like our job is to have as many conversations with community members as we can in order to, to talk about what's in this and what's not in this, because those are two different things. Because there are things that are being reduced and then, as Rob said, there's many things that we, we are not willing to put onto a, to a budget as a school board. And we should talk about those things and why they're important to the district. So I think at this point, and I'm looking at Steve a little bit here, just for some, some guidance. I, I think we could make a motion, it's not one of our action items, but I think we can make a motion. And the motion, I think, would be to, to recommend to the moderator that, that the number be put on to, be put on to the, I guess it would be as an amendment for the August 15th meeting. And I'm not sure, I know what that number is precisely. And, and so it, so this is sort of a, I, I don't want to scramble to get that number, but this is sort of a test on how to, how do we formulate a motion as best we can in order to sort of send to the moderator so he understands what we're asking, what we're asking him to do.
Michelle, it'd be the 20,009,23,855, right?
Yeah, that's the amount that you'd want to raise and appropriate. I just can't remember the language, if it talked about, like from the motion before, like a reduction from the last, I don't know.
I think if we, sorry, sorry, Michelle, I think if we just had that number, I think that's probably sufficient for what will, what we, what do we want to signal to the moderator and then we can get into the details with him of what that means. But it's that 20 million number, which is great. So any, before, before on the fly, I tried to articulate emotions. Any other comments that anybody wants to make sort of on this plan or where we're at?
I didn't get a chance to voice my support, so I also support this. And the one thing that I wanted to say that's a little different from what folks have been talking about is I appreciate kind of the idea of folks moving here for the schools or, or, you know, really coming to this community for the schools. But I think there are a lot of folks who have been in this community for a really long time. Not just for the schools, but for the community, for their friends, for their family who have lived here, some of them for like hundreds of years. And what I like about this budget that Rob has presented today is that it took both, you know, so often when we talk about budget, we only think about expenditures and that's not what a budget is, right? It is the expenditures and the revenue. And I think what this does is it really highlights how those two things work together to create a tax rate impact that I, I agree. I think that it supports our students in this time. I think it supports our community, which is also top of mind for me. You know, I'm, I'm thinking about folks that I talk to and continue to talk to. And I also think about, I spoke to an individual when I was looking at running for school board. And one thing she said really struck, stuck with me, which is she doesn't just think about her children now, but she thinks of future generations. And I think what this budget does is it provides a good base for those future generations. And my worry, if we were to go with a flat budget, is not only would it harm children now, it would harm our future generations. So I really appreciate all the work, Rob, that you put into this. I think it is well thought out and really does a great job of supporting our values and the vision that our board, that this board wants to put out there as far as what we value and what we hope this community values within a school district. So thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. So what I would ask, if there is a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to recommend to the school district moderator, a proposed amendment to the operating budget of 20,953,000. Michelle, I think I, 855, thank you. I couldn't read actually my own hands. So 20,923?
Yep.
855? I couldn't read my own hand scratching. I apologize to everyone. So is there a motion?
No move.
All right. So the motion's been made and second. Any further discussion? I just want to, I know we've all profusely thanked Rob, but I just want to, again, thank you, Rob, for taking the time. I know it's not easy and it's a lot of conversations and a lot of thinking, so thank you so much.
Well, thanks, Steve, as well, because we worked pretty hard together to get it to where it's at, so.
And Michelle ran tons of numbers the last two days, so it's all good. This is what, this is how we do it.
Perfect. So if there's no other discussion, I will, you can vote. And so Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Seth?
Seth A. Frame, yes.
And Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And so that motion passes 5-0. So we will transmit that to James Newsome. And actually that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is sort of just a brief, very brief update on the annual meeting. So we had, I had extended invitation to James to join us and he was unable to. And I think, you know, there's been a lot of, I think, discussion about, you know, the format of, of an annual meeting. What's it going to look like? Where is it going to be? And my last conversation with James is I think that's still all up in the air. He hasn't made a determination. I think he's, he's, you know, he's thinking about the last votes that we had drive-by voting and how they worked. We, we do have a September 1st hard deadline, both us and municipalities to, to have a budget in place by September 1st. And so I think James is thinking about what happens if we do a drive-by and it fails? What's that mean, you know, for the September 1st deadline? And then, you know, the value of deliberation and having a conversation with your community about, about the numbers and being, questions getting answered. So I think that's all flowing through James's mind as he's thinking about August 15th. And I also know that the select board met on Monday to have a discussion about their meeting, which was scheduled for July 18th. And part of their discussion was, is there, is, is there a possibility or even an interest in the moderators trying to be efficient with the time of, of all the voters and how many times they're going to do voting? And whether or not there's efficiency in, no matter what the, how the meeting runs, whether it's an in-person deliberate, deliberative meeting or if it's a drive-through meeting, but is there an opportunity to, to do both, both voting sessions at once? And how that might look. And so the, the select board had a, had a pretty good conversation with their moderator about that. And I think the decision from the select board was to not have their meeting on July 18th. And they asked their moderator to be in touch with our moderator and then just discuss if there was an opportunity for, for any of this, if they could work together on, on formulating any sort of idea. And then the school, the select board is going to be meeting again next Monday, so I think that's July 6th, with their moderator again, to, so he'll report back on, on how those conversations went and whether or not there's an next step at all. So I think, I guess the, the end result is, I think things are still up in the air, but the moderators are at least discussing together how, if there's a way that we can be more efficient in these two votes, which are, which are going to be stacked close together in order to get the, the best result we can for both the town and the school budgets and get some resolution before the September 1st statutory deadline that we have. I don't know if there's any questions, as much as I know, happy to try to answer any questions if there are any. Or any thoughts? Are there any like strong no's that we wouldn't, if, if, if the moderators did come back and say that there's an opportunity, you know, to, to join together to, to do some sort of voting? Is there, is there a hard opposition to that? That'd be probably good to know to, to send back to James.
I guess my question would be whether there'd be two separate ballots, one for, that was just the school side and one that was, I mean, we don't need anything that's going to create any confusion at this point. But if it's going to help townspeople and get people, you know, one more time through, so long as we can create enough clarity.
Yeah, I think, and that was what, one of the things that select board did talk about, that both for an in-person meeting and then as well as the drive-by, making sure that, making sure that any voting and any meeting was, you know, completely separate. So it'd be different ballots. It was more of a, because the infrastructure for either of those is going to have to be set up. You're going to have to set up an in-person meeting with, with the sound system and all that. And you're still going to, as I know Rob knows, because he was there, I think for the last drive-by voting all day, there's an infrastructure that needs to be in place for those as well. If we can not have to recreate that twice, if you only have to do it once, that, that seemed to make sense.
Yeah, I guess my, my only question would just be with the, not the logistics, but the legality. I just want to make sure that we are, you know, and I'm sure our moderator will, but just we postponed and postponed our meeting. So I, I would not want to, you know, have it turn out not, not to be done correctly legally. So that, that would just mean my check and double check.
Yeah, no, it's important. All right. So if nothing else, my, my hope, I mean, my hope is that the moderator, following his conversations with, with the, with the town, will at least send us some sort of memo or note, letting us know what he's thinking, probably sooner than later. Because I do think there's, obviously there's a lot of interest in the community and obviously among this board, sort of, you know, what we're preparing for when. And so I, my hope is that in the next week or so, that that will get settled out and we'll know, you know, we'll know the task in front of us and how it's going to play out. I think either way, we have to communicate, you know, this budget and what we want done, no matter what the format for the meeting will be. But it would be good to know what the format for the meeting is going to be so we can, we can prepare ourselves and be ready, you know, to, to answer questions and to put our proposals in front of the board, in front of the town.
Jim, what would be the appropriate time that you, you know, I mentioned to you a couple of times about establishing maybe a task force to kind of determine how we can communicate to the community this budget. And I'd really be interested in maybe next board meeting, we can discuss that if you're, if you're comfortable with how we can communicate this, this budget to the community. This multiple ways of communicating and I'm really, I'm definitely interested in helping with it. I know probably some community members might want to help. There's multiple ways of reaching out and I really want to make a clear message to this community, we understand that you want to understand this better. When's the best time for us to discuss the opportunity to have that?
Well, it, it may be wise, Norm, since you brought it up, we might want to spend a few minutes now because we don't meet again for another two weeks. And so I don't feel like, I feel like if there's ideas for how the board, so the, all five of us, like how we want to, how we want to communicate. I think Rob's, you know, put together a good spreadsheet. I think there's, there's things that we can do as a district. I think Rob's, you know, put together a good spreadsheet. I think there's, there's things that we can do as a district to get the information out. Um, and then I also think there's things individually that we can do um, other in, in ones or twos. We can't do them in threes. And so, um, and I think, and I think that's powerful. Um, I think the more that, um, I, I think we, we individually choose to do, whether or not it's going to the dump, as you mentioned, Norm, um, to talk about this, or whether or not it's, you know, holding. Andrea and I have talked about whether or not, like, once a week, we would just kind of hold office hours, for lack of a better term. You know, on Zoom where we would just, people can come on and ask questions as a way to sort of talk about what's in the budget and what we're thinking. Anyway, so I thi- I think now might be a good time, because in two weeks, we're gonna be two weeks closer to um, a meeting. And I, I would rather if people have ideas, kind of work on them beforehand.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a great point, Jim. Like, the idea of having office hours, being able to meet people remotely, being, like I said, the dump. Um, there's many ways of communicating. You mentioned to me how to get the gazebo, you know, having six feet apart, have an opportunity for people to go up and ask a question. However it is for, because we have fifty-two people watching who saw his, his presentation tonight. We have a lot more voters in Hopkinton. And I think there's a lot, lot of ways we can communicate, give this, you know, explanation. So when they come up for election, when they come up for the vote and they understand exactly what they're voting on, and there's no confusion. And I think that's very, very important, that we can answer their questions in advance. I don't necessarily have a plan right now. I wanted to discuss it with you guys, but I'm, I'm happy to, um, you know, maybe Steve has time. I know he's pretty booked. We can brainstorm maybe a little bit together. You know, thoughts, thoughts for me was, you know, letters to the editor. You know, we, all five of us support this budget. You know, if it doesn't, if the chair representing us out there writing a letter, so the community can see how important this budget is, I'm all for that. If it's me writing a letter, I'm all for that. There's multiple ways that we have to communicate the urgency of passing this. And, you know, I think Andrea was right. You know, it, it meets needs of everybody. You know, people who have been in town, who are struggling, who can't afford it, it's a compromise. And, and it's a very, it's, it's a hard, it's a hard for everybody, but um, it just, I, I'm, I'm, I'm welcome to think of some ideas and present it to the board at some point. Uh, I think maybe two board members to help with it would be a good idea to start. Uh, one month, that would be great. You know, I think that's a good, good plan.
Andrea?
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we had kind of talked about um, office hours. I hadn't really brought it up yet, since we hadn't flushed it out more. I know, that's totally fine. It's absolutely fine. Um, you know, I think that, that, that can be really helpful, just as an opportunity. Both for folks to get on and just ask questions, as well as what I like about kind of an online office hour is that people can ask whatever they want. We can speak pretty freely about stuff, but we're also staying physically distanced, which is great. I think that mailers can be helpful. Um, I think that we for sure have some, first, we needed a plan. You know, frankly, we needed a budget and a plan. Now that we have one, I think that um, we can put some stuff together to go out, and I'm happy to work on that. Um, and I think we can also, you know, share this on our, on the district Facebook page as well. You know, we can kind of put something together to be shared that way as well, since I know a lot of folks are on Facebook as well. And, and writing letters to the editor. I mean, I think pretty much like if you can think of it and you feel like it was supportive and it would um, hit like a, a group of folks that you think really need to be to, that you need to talk to, do it. You know, I think that sometimes it's great to have like a really structured plan. But also it's great for us to use our individual skills to reach out to folks.
I like all of those possibilities, and you know, I think Andrea, you know, you pointed out, reaching out to folks. I think we just need to ask people for their vote. At this point, you know, in our rationale behind why we're asking them for their vote and their understanding of the situation, and what's best for the town and what's best for them, quite frankly. So, um, you know, I wish it wasn't pandemic, because I like coffee and I like the everyday, and that's my favorite place to hang out in the morning to have conversations. But um, you know, I'm willing to do any and all of those things, so.
So I agree with all the informal stuff. I do think we should send a letter to the town from, signed by all five of us, saying, this is why we're for this, being an advocate. I mean, I've thought a lot about this. We did a mailer the first time. It was all kind of procedural information. This is our budget. This is our proposal. There is nothing wrong with us going forward under all of our signatures and saying, this is why we're for it. This is how we got here, and this is why you should vote for it. We can do that in one page and get it into everybody, so that we're not waiting for them to come to us. We are at least going to them first and then have all the kind of meetings that you're talking about, where we can follow up with those who wanna say more. But make sure we, and you know, we can also publish that same letter on all of the various Facebook and the website, et cetera. But some document we all agree on that we use to, to make our point.
No, I think that's, that's a really great idea. And that's something I think, um, I'm trying to, I, I think that's probably a very uh, good, something that we can execute over the next couple of weeks. Um, and, and probably bring to the meeting in two weeks for any sort of final thoughts, and then have that ready in two weeks. That, that feels pretty good. And I'm, I'm happy to work with someone on, on a draft of that. I don't know if anybody wants to raise, Andrea? So we can, we can start a draft, um, and then, you know, circulate that draft, you know, maybe in a week. And then, um, you know, people can look at that, send some edits, and then bring a final copy on, on the meeting, if that works for folks.
That'd be great.
Sure, that's a really good idea. Alright, and then there will be, I mean, I, I know that mailing that we did for the May thirtieth meeting was procedural and it, there's probably gonna be something like that again, I think, no matter what. But we can add a little more, but we have more time than we had in the four days from the previous meeting to maybe add a little bit more to, um, you know, to the mailer and, and how we, how we make it look and feel and read to the community. If we had, if we had an extra couple of weeks, I think we can put together a better product that would answer more questions, I think, than our previous one did.
Jim, can I step us back, because there's one thing that I meant to bring up when we were talking about budget that I, and I promised someone that I would, so.
Please.
Um, so there was some discussion I, about why we have not released a budget and really what the person meant or persons meant was why we haven't released a line item budget. And I explained, you know, where we're at, the nuances of that, and that it's something that we're looking at and what Hudson specifically does in other school districts. But that's gonna take a little bit of time and changes in protocol. And I don't think we, we necessarily wanna do everything Hudson's doing, because I'm not sure everybody needs to know how much we spend on Frisbee discs. But um, the thing that we do have that's closest to that is that quarterly financial that we've discussed. And I think it would be a good idea to simply put that on the website, either under, I don't know with Steve, where it would best go. But just, I mean, it's information that we give people, a sense of the expenditures and by line, as arduous as it is, unless you're an accountant, what we're spending our money on. So just a little bit more, I don't even wanna say transparency, because it is public information. You just have to request it. So if one person can request it, anybody should be able to see it without going through that process. So I would ask the board to um, be willing to do that, and if, you know, Steve wants to speak to it before you guys.
Sure, we put, we put them up usually at the meeting that they are presented at. But we can organize, you know, we put them under the meeting, but we can organize it as part of the budget information. All the quarterly is happy to. So Michelle and I will just make sure we get the right, right documents, but we will, you know, next week, we will make them available at, in a couple of different places on the web.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks Rob, that's, that's a good point to bring up. Alright, are we all, are we good to move on? Lot of head nods. Alright, so um, next up is sort of revisiting the, the conversation we had at, uh, two weeks ago with the presentation on the Hopkinton one hundred, um, to get to a hundred percent renewables. And so we received um, from the students for one hundred, we, we received the request of us. Maybe that, that's, that's probably the good place to start. So the request of us um, was to adopt the resolution that the, the students did send with our packet. Which effectively, um, the action in, in the resolution was for the school district to establish a goal of achieving a hundred percent clean energy by twenty thirty and phasing out all fossil fuel onsite by twenty fifty and, and by twenty forty if feasible. Um, and then as part of that, we would um, form a subcommittee by November of this year to create and oversee an implementation plan. And then it talks about some details about that, about what that plan would look like and, and how it would come together. And so that, that's what the students, that, that's the formal request, for lack of a better term, that the students have put in, in front of us to respond to. And so we pretty, we, at, at that last meeting, we said we would give it a couple of weeks and we'll put this back on the agenda and would sort of, you know, all think about um, the resolution and what we wanna do and how we would like to sort of take a next step forward um, on what they presented to us. And so I think now is the time, and I'm, I'll open it up if, if anybody has thoughts on sort of the resolution itself, what we heard or what we might wanna do.
So, well, I'll say, I was impressed with what I heard. I am in favor of the premise. And I guess what I wanna make sure is I understand the feasibility of the premise before I vote for the premise. And so they did mention companies that do the work. And I feel like what should happen is the committee, the subcommittee is a good idea to research, talk to the contract, to the companies that do this kind of work to make sure that before we vote for a goal, we have a better sense that we can reach that goal. We don't wanna vote for a goal that we, you know, is either prohibitively expensive, can't be reached. Um, so I just wanna make sure that before we say yes to the whole thing, we know what we're saying yes to. So that, I propose that we, we go forward by getting perhaps a group of us, and maybe there are other people in that group to move forward, talking to people to the, basically the, start with the contractors, but you know, to get a sense of what's feasible here. That'd be my view.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Seth. I, I think where I get hung up is the hundred percent renewable. And I think Cooper is, is listening in on the meeting. He probably remembers the econ class when we talked about how clean is clean. And uh, you know, it may, if it costs you three million dollars to get to ninety-five percent, but it's gonna cost you thirty million dollars to get to a hundred percent, that may not make sense. So I get kind of hung up there. I do think that it is the responsibility of the school district to lead the charge on renewables. I love the idea of having solar that's visible. I think one of the problems with global warming is it's an intangible that we don't necessarily see. And when we can see it, people realize we're acting on it. And I think that, you know, as a educational part of our, our responsibility is to lead that charge. So I'm just a little hung up on the hundred percent piece.
Yeah, I think to Seth's point, I think doing our own due diligence and researches is just prudent. Um, and I do like Rob's idea of visible solar. I think it helps normalize having solar. You know, I, I think in some communities, everybody has it and you see it everywhere. And I would love for our community to move in that direction.
Norm?
They all say what I was gonna say. You know, I, you know, for me, I'm thinking legal. What, you know, what did our legal counsel say about having a contract out that long, you know, for that many years? Digging a little bit deeper, having a committee to look into this, I think is something that's um, you know, will help us with some questions. And also, also discussing more with the facility committee potentially of other school districts that have done this with stuff maybe that I'm not aware of or the boards aren't aware of. I know Gordon Bristle has been in contact with them and had some good discussions about um, other school districts that have done this. So we have the resources that we can kind of go back and ask some questions that may help this board coming up with a decision while they're still with us.
The Norm, the Norm, um, he did. Okay, it's not just me, because I say I like people moving. So something that Steve has mentioned, so thinking about like a committee to help us out. Um, you know, we do have, um, and it's, it's the four R committee, right Steve?
Might be five Rs. I think it might be five. So, yes, that's um, with Bonnie Christie and Julie Zaptins and Lori Janis, I wrote about it. And we've got some teachers and some kids. And we are looking at composting, we're looking at, but I think that group would, it would be, and the kid, the, the students talked about joining. And I think that would be the group for them to join, so they can support. And we're certainly, if there's a board member who would like to, to, to join this work. We got a little bit halted when we went, you know, when we went to remote learning, we were just about to do. But I think that group is engaged. We, I mean, we can do the educational components. We do have high schools. We have teachers at every level. So I think we're in a, I think that is well situated to understand and make a recommendation to the board.
Um, I, I mean, I thi- I think it makes sense, one, because it's already an established committee. And so that committee already, um, it's already up and going and they, they, this fits into their worldview rather than trying to create a new committee over the summer and early fall. Um, it feels, it feels good to give it to a committee and knowing those members, I think they would all be into this conversation. I think they would enjoy it. And I mean, I would volunteer myself if, if no one had an objection to it. I uh, I, I do some of this work professionally. And um, I think I'm very eager to see our school moving in this direction, our district and our town. Um, and so I, I, I think I have some value to add. And I know a lot of vendors and I know some of the contractors, and I think it could be helpful. And, and then, and I do think there's a tie-in here to our CIP work. Because at some point, there is gonna be a cost. Um, I think there's a lot of things that we could do through leasing. But um, if we're really gonna get in here and be serious, as, as Rob said, there is gonna be, you know, there's gonna be a cost to get to a certain point, and then a cost to get to the next um, level. And I just think as we work on our CIP, if this is a priority for us and we sign a commitment, you know, we're gonna have to create a plan for how we're going to finance and fund this. And I, and so there's a nice tie-in as well to our CIP work.
And Jim, would you consider another board member like myself joining to help out with my, on the, on the committee? I think it'd probably help tie in with the facility project, since this is something that's gonna be a part of it.
Yeah, I think if, if the existing committee doesn't mind two board members on there, I'm sure, I'm sure the more the merrier, so that'd be great.
Okay, thank you Jim.
No, yeah, thank you Norm. So it sounds like we have a, we have a plan. So we'll, we'll, Steve, I guess, could, do you mind talking to the, to the, the five R committee? We've added another R to them.
Yeah, I'll be happy to send an email and see if we can convene it, uh, you know, uh, you know, this summer, it's, we can talk about plans for the year, put a schedule together.
That'd be great. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Alright, um, if there's nothing else on this topic, um, our next topic is policy, which is the post issuance tax compliance policy. And so Steve, I may ask you to, to set this one up, or Andrea, or Seth, I'm sorry, whoever wants to set this one up.
It's so interesting, Steve can set it up.
Yeah, sure. So um, Michelle worked extensively with bond counsel on planning for, for the bond and brought me in at the last couple of meetings. And one of the last meetings, our bond counsel, Renella Hulier, suggested that we take a look at developing a, a post issuance tax compliance policy to make sure we handle the proceeds appropriately, so frankly, we could withstand an IRS audit. I mean, that's, the policy is written and procedures are in place, that if we, if we follow the policy, then we will have a, 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 a clean audit. And so it came from that work where they uh, worked with, through audits, and then these are the procedures that we have to establish. So um, this was one hundred percent developed by counsel, who's an expert in the field. We are about to receive the proceeds, and it's a recommendation of the policy committee and Michelle and me that we waive the three readings. It is, I can't imagine over the next three readings, because it is developed by counsel specifically to meet, meet the requirements of federal law. That we adopted tonight, put it in place, and it gives Michelle and me the real, the step-by-steps on how to do it. And we appreciate Renella's work and support of the district, and having this in place prior to receiving the proceeds is really our fiduciary. And it's a, a really good thing that we can have it ready to go.
And Steve, can you just talk really briefly too about like the fact that the funds that we receive are taxes exempt? And so this makes sure that we maintain that tax exempt status, and that if we don't, we pay taxes.
Yeah, and I think you just, you just, you just said it well. One of the items is like the arbitrage notion, that wait, we take this money that we're not using, we put it in some high, some high risk and try and earn some interest. Well, that would violate um, the, the tax, because we can't make, we can't make profit off this, we are actually tax exempt status. So the arbitrage prohibit, prohibit, prohibition is in this policy, as well as how we monitor and how we handle the funds, so.
Answering my trip to Foxwoods now.
Yeah, yeah, not with the, not with the P card, Rob. Yeah, yeah, not with the, not with the P card, Rob. So um, so that's where we're at. I just would, I know Michelle and I both would feel better having this in place prior to receiving the proceeds.
So is there any question? I mean, and this was in our packets, everybody had the opportunity to read it. Is there any questions on any of the components uh of of sort of the policy? Um, and then just just to reinstate to the the action item on this item, will be for us to waive the uh three reading requirements on the policy. And so we'll just do it all at once. So it'd be a waiver of the uh the three readings and then approval of the policy. So as long as everybody's comfortable with that, um, that's how we'll proceed. All right. Um, so the the next item is the school board schedule and a public hearing um that we're going to schedule for our next meeting, as long as everybody's comfortable with that on the maintenance trust withdrawal. So um it's been a practice of the board that anytime we do a withdrawal from the from the maintenance trust, that we hold a public hearing to discuss the trust, what it is, um, what's lined up and then um what we're going to withdraw for what reason. And so uh, that would be held uh at five o'clock um on July 16th. So we would do the public hearing um before the board meeting officially begins at 5:30. And so this is kind of a calendar check and make sure that's okay with everybody, the five o'clock start time. Um, I see head nodding. All right. And so we'll schedule that, um, we'll we'll notice the public hearing at five o'clock um and all that information on on the uh maintenance trust and and what we're going to be withdrawing and for what reason um will be uh forthcoming in in the board packet and to the community. Steve, anything I missed out on that one that you want to mention?
That's perfect. The only, the only decision you have to make when we post it, do you want the board meeting to start shortly after the public hearing or at 5:30? Sometimes the public hearings don't take exactly how much, it's up to you. Just let me know.
I think we we let's um, let's keep the 5:30 start time and if if um we need to get off Zoom for a few minutes and and stretch our legs, that's probably wouldn't be a bad thing in between these things. Um, that way the public then knows what time we're starting. So.
And then I'll probably post it as two separate meetings with two separate Zooms just to make it. So is that all right with you?
Yeah, I think whatever, whatever works, that's great.
Perfect.
Thank you, Steve. Um, and so our final item um is uh on the superintendent search. And so um uh Seth has already let the cat out of the bag. Um, so we were going to announce um that we, uh, the board has has agreed and decided that we're going to um establish a committee to um to lead us to lead the board um in the superintendent search. And so um we uh, we asked Seth if uh he would be chair of that committee. Um, and Seth graciously agreed to to lead that committee and lend his talents. Um, and then we also asked Rob if he would also serve on the committee. And Rob has graciously agreed uh to represent the board on that committee as well, which is outstanding. And we thank both of you um for for stepping up. This isn't an easy job. And uh, we really thank you for for taking on this really important task. And so I'm gonna think hand it over to Seth who I think, you know, they've they've been a committee, uh, at least a committee of two for all of about six days. And so I'm really excited to hear all the great work that you guys have done.
All right. So um, Rob and I have gotten together and we've we've met and I'll I'll just sort of give an outline of where we expect this to go. So we looked at materials really published by state, uh, select different organizations that talk about superintendent searches. And it's pretty universal. When you have a board like ours where everyone is employed in some other fashion, the idea that the board is going to successfully manage this entirely on its own usually leads to failure and we're not interested in failure. So it's pretty universal that getting a consulting firm is um the first step. Um, and so we've taken steps to get that ball um rolling. We looked at uh materials for what a a request or proposals from these kinds of firms looks like. Jim, you provided me some materials. I looked at some others. I prepared one for Hopington. I basically use Madison, Connecticut as a template and then um, you know, looked at some other ones and built different pieces. The 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 hope tonight is that we would generally agree to the request or proposal. I might change some of the dates that I put in it by moving everything back maybe a week and get those out to to firms. We have a list of about 10 firms that we are aware of that do this kind of work. Some are, some are local, some are beyond New England. And hopefully get a consulting firm hired by the board sometime in August so that this process can really begin in earnest in the fall, in the early fall. What I, so we talked about, we are going to have a superintendent search committee. We don't want to get the membership set till we hire the consultant. The hiring of the consultant is the board's decision. That's going to be a a contract ratified by the board. But we want to talk with the consultant about the best construct of our committee. How large should it be? What balance of community versus faculty versus, you know, students, the whole thing. So um, so our thought is let's move forward to get the consultant on board. Rob, I, the board can talk to the consultant, then get a cer- a a search committee formed by the end of the summer and begin the community outreach in earnest in the fall. So um, that is, that is the current plan. In the board materials was the draft um request or proposal. When I went through it again, again, other than changing the dates, you know, that's the only change I thought might be needed to give the companies a little bit more time to get us their materials. We would go through them, decide whether we recommend that we invite them to come talk to us and make a recommendation to the board about which company, you know, we think the board should contract with. So that's where we are. Um, now that's the process after six days.
That's pretty good progress. Um, I'm impressed. Uh, Rob, do you want to add anything?
I, I think that sums it up quite well.
Um, Seth, when did you hope, um, when did you hope to issue the RFP like the um, I assume ASAP?
Yeah, next week.
Um, and so maybe for, does anybody, um, is there any disagreement from any board member, at least on the process Seth's just laid out in terms of, you know, doing an RFP and hiring a consultant and trying to move this process forward that way? Um, yeah, and I'm totally in favor. And I guess um, I have no interest in in slowing you you down, you and Rob. So all I would ask um is is maybe a request of the board that um the RFP that Seth put together is in the packet, it's it's um in our shared drive. I would just maybe ask everybody to spend, you know, an hour um over the Fourth of July weekend. It's going to rain tomorrow and so maybe that's a good opportunity. But you know, spend an hour and go over it. And then if you have any edits or suggestions or comments, um, send them directly to Seth. Um, I think that's probably the wisest thing to do. And then Seth, um, again, I have full faith and confidence and I would, I would just ask that you take anybody's edits or comments and weigh them against what you've already um done, work with Rob, and then um, I have no problem with you using that structure and then issuing a contract and uh, or issuing an RFP, not a contract. I've wrong, wrong choice of words. And so maybe I, we could just ask if every board member could do that um by like, close the business on Monday. Send Seth all your edits and then, you know, Seth, you could issue it and work with Steve or whoever to get that out. I think would probably be best.
Seth, what dates were you looking at pushing back, like the, when the proposals must be submitted to us?
Yeah, I think I said submit everything by July 31st.
Yeah.
That might be a little bit aggressive. So I was thinking another week, which would then just put back our decision date by a week. But I want it all, I I would like to have someone hired by August, end of August. That would be my goal.
Um, how does everybody feel about that as sort of a a working proposal?
Good.
All right, perfect. Um, so happy reading. Um, and then thank you, Seth, and again, thank you, Rob, um, for taking this on. This is great. So that is, um, unless there's any other item, um, that's the end of our um, of the agenda that's posted. If no one has any other uh business, we do have, um, at the end of our action items, we do have a a non-public scheduled um on two matters, um, a personal matter and then um a legal matter. And so I, at the end, I'll just ask uh us to go into non-public um for those two issues. And so um, this brings us to our second um opportunity for public comment. And so um, if you are still with us on the line and you have um a public comment that you'd like to make, all I do is ask that you use your your mouse or cursor and go down to the bottom of the screen and there's a raise your hand button that you can press and that will let us know that you um wish to provide comment to the board. And so our first hand that's that's raised is Tammy Clay. So Tammy, thanks for joining us this evening. You can unmute yourself.
I think I just did.
Wonderful.
I hate to be a pain in the stick or stick in the mud or whatever. So don't you think a five week search to replace Steve is is tight? It sounds like, it sounds.
Sorry, that's not the plan. The plan for the five weeks is to hire a consulting firm.
Okay.
Will help us put together the project to hi- hire Steve's replacement, which is going to involve community participation, faculty participation, student participation, hopefully. Then getting candidates, vetting candidates, in district visits. It's a long, it's an involved process.
Steve is still with us until the end of 2021.
That's correct.
Perfect. That's, that's what I was, that's question one. Question two, who is paying for the mailer that you guys are want to, going to want to send out? Because that's expensive.
Um, the mailer, I, I, you're referring to the mailer for the annual voting. Yeah, so um, we, the district sends it out. We, we sent down a mailer um before the first meeting, the first vote, and then the second vote, um, we used every door direct. And um, we printed them um in this, in the SAU office and we folded them and stapled them.
What I'm talking about, don't you, Steve?
And Steve, I don't know how much that was.
Yeah, I say, I, I'm not going there. I, we can't do, well, no, just um the um, if you have someone with a mailing in in the the Indisha, it saves you money. But I don't think the school district has one of those. So, all right, so that's more money out of the budget. Okay. And then the last thing I have to ask is um the decision, you know, this is, this is this upcoming budget we're talking about, the 2020, 2021?
Yeah, actually, it's the budget that we're currently in. So this is our second day of our new fiscal year.
Right, right. So what I'm concerned about after reading the newspaper articles and hearing the news is um are you guys even making any plans for the fall about rotating schedules in line, online, in person? Rotating the smaller bus schedules, um, smaller bus, kids on the buses and the increased price for PPEs and testing for students and staff and the smaller classes that are going to be required, because that's going to put us way overboard on the budget, I think.
Yeah, so good question. I'm gonna ask Steve maybe to to update us, but we do, um, Steve has established a back to school committee um that met to to look at the, look at all these questions that you just asked and and a lot more um about how we return to school safely. I don't know, Steve, if you want to add on.
Sure. Um, and and thank you to Norm who's um on it as well. We've got a steering committee with about seven subcommittees forming. Um, we're working on a survey to measure faculty as well as community member comfortability. Today I met with a regional group of superintendents as we start working through just, just as you said, Tammy, just the complexities with trying to operate under state recommendations from CDC. So um, it is a very complex, uh, every district, we, I mean, we don't have a budget yet. But um, really, it, we'll do the best we can with what we have and how we do it. But we're trying to get a baseline information where the community is and our teachers are and and try just as we can. But it is a, it is a very complex um situation. Um, but we've got great people trying to figure it out.
And Tammy, uh, just fill in one more. We do, we did receive um some money from the state in terms of um enabling us to spend on on COVID preparedness um in in sort of the the cost that may be associated with going back to school. And then we also have set aside some of the uh fund balance at our last meeting, again, in order to give us some some cushion and some some dollars, because we we do anticipate there being additional costs associated with it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Um, and so I, uh, other than Tammy, I don't see any other hands um for public comment at this time. Oh, I do see a hand for follow comment at this time, uh, because the Andrea laughing at me, because whenever I say that someone raises their hand, which is great. We we enjoy public comments. And thank you so much for joining us.
Um, I just wanted to quickly say that I really applaud the board for taking the time, the energy to really try to preserve core educational programs and our kids' education with an eye towards fiscal responsibility. And I think that this budget truly represents a big compromise. You know, it's not a budget that would be the budget of dreams, the budget that is very responsive to this town.
And I think um we lost you there. Oh, I can't really hear you. I know you're there because I can hear a whisper, but I can't, we can't really make out what you're saying. No, I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Okay, nevermind.
Oh, you just came roaring back.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you right there.
Great. I don't know what part of what I was saying got cut out, but I just wanted to thank and applaud the board on taking the time and the care to really formulate a budget proposal that had the best interests of our students and education at hand. And I was saying, I know that it's not the budget of my dreams, but it's a budget that is very responsive to the multiple different voices in this community. And I think that it is a true example of a compromised budget. So well done, all of you.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for your comments and thanks for bearing with us too. Um, all right, so uh, there's, uh, let's see, Candy Garvin is going for a second turn. Candy, hold on one second. All right, Candy, you should be able to mute yourself. Hello again.
Well, hello, Candy Garvin, 515 Bounty Road. Ditto. Good night.
Hi, thank you, Candy. All right, so I see no other hands. And so I am going, I I am going to, I'm going to close the the public comment portion of the meeting. Thank you all um for joining with us. And so uh, the last items are action items. And so we've already voted on the uh, the budget number. And so um, remember that we have uh one action item around the post insure- insurance tax compliance policy. And then we're going to be revoting on um some items that appeared on the May 21st as we did at the beginning of this meeting on the minute. So there's a number of items that we'll be revoting on. So um, is there a motion for the Hopington School Board to accept a superintendent's recommendation to waive the three reading requirement and approve policy post issuance tax compliance policy as presented?
Second.
Uh, has been a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Um, we'll start with Norm.
Norm Cooper is a yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato is a yes.
Seth?
That they frame, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And so that is approved 5-0. Thank you, Michelle and Steve for putting this together and getting it to us so quickly. Um, Steve, this next item, um, the re-vote on our recommendation to the budget committee, I I guess we can do it. It feels like that has
Yeah.
as that has happened. Um, okay.
Yeah.
And that's not a binding vote anyway. So, okay. So is there a motion for the Hopington School Board to re-support? No, that's, let me reword this. Is there a motion um for the Hopington School Board?
To once again, maybe?
Yeah, to once again, support the implementation of the $9.7 million facility project and ensure that the project has the financial resources required to complete the scope of the project on schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Perfect. All right, motions. Perfect, all right, motion's been made in second. Uh, I'm, I'm now remembering this meeting, um, as we're revoting on the motions. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, um, Norm?
Norm Kupel is a yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato is a yes.
Seth?
That they frame yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. I am going to skip again, like, uh, action item 16, because graduation has already happened. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to re-approve HMHS German teacher Sally Olson's request for maternity leave? Start date and duration to be determined by the superintendent. Any discussion? Hearing none, Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
A frame yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
And Norm?
Norm Kupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So that motion is re-approved 5-0. Is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to re-approve the superintendent's nomination of Carl Olson? Long-term substitute, start date, duration to be determined by the superintendent of schools?
So moved.
Second.
Andrea, got you. Any discussion? Hearing none, Andrea?
Oh, Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
They frame yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Kupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes and that, um, motion has been re-approved. And finally, is there a motion for the Huffington School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to re-approve budget adjustment 2020 hyphen four? To reclassify funds to cover the HMS sprinkler design?
So moved.
Motion's been made in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
Seth?
That they frame yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Norm?
Norm Kupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes, um, so that is the end of our action items. And I would just ask if there is a motion for the Huffington School Board to enter into non-public session for the discussion of matters per RSA 91A3. Roman 2A and E, um, for discussion of personnel and legal matters.
So moved.
So moved. Excuse me.
Is that a second?
Second.
Perfect, um, motion's been made in second, so, uh, Norm?
Norm Kupel is a yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato is a yes.
Seth?
That they frame yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes, um, so we'll be going into non-public session. I will, um, as I, I should have done before the meeting, but I'll send everybody on the SAU email a link for the non-public session. And, um, if, if we can be, you know, a couple of minutes and then join that session, that would be great. Michelle, thank you so much. For joining us this evening, happy fourth, have a good, long weekend, uh, appreciate all your work.
Be safe.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone.